All right, well, it is, I believe, five thirty. You made it, just under the wire. Right. All right, I'm gonna call a meeting to order, and this is the, this is the work session, City Council Work Session for Menetrista February third. And with us this evening, we have Chief Paul, we have Community David Abel, Bryn, Jasper Krugel, Lisa Wayland. And do I have to give all of your titles to, no, not for the work session, right? All right, council members, we have Kathleen Reckon, and Peter Vickery, Claudia Lacy, Brian Dever. And then we also have Gary Peters and Alan Paulus, and then also Aaron Ballmer with A E two S. So we only have one item on our work session agenda, is the water treatment plant presentation and meeting and discussion. Who wants to go first?
I can, I can just kind of get things ticked off, I always like to can say, what are the goals?
And it's also remote.
I want to talk about like, what are the goals of the meeting today? What are we trying to accomplish? And hopefully we can get there, but essentially, we want to, we want to be able to get to the point where we can continue this project moving forward one way or another. And we're here to answer any questions. I did prepare, I got some questions from a council member that I shared with everybody. So I think there were good questions about just different scenarios and things like that. So I thought, well, I'm gonna type this up for, for one of the council members, and I'm just gonna share with everybody. So I did give that to everybody here, I sent it out earlier this morning, or late morning today. And I'd like to go over that, just if there's, I don't know if everybody's had a chance to look at it, but there's questions related to the mixing. You know, I think there's been a lot of talking about mixing of like well number three with our treated water. And at what extent do we do that? What extent can we do that before we hit that health-based standard for manganese? And you know, iron, iron's the other thing that kind of travels with, or that usually is with manganese, and that's where you get that brown color in your water. So I don't know, if you guys want me to go through the memo, I could definitely do that. If there's specific questions related to the memo or not related to the memo, we also have the PowerPoint from the last meeting. If there's specific things from there that we want to talk about. I think the probably the most, I don't know, beneficial thing in the memo from this morning is just the amortization schedule. What can you expect from each level of project costs? What the annual payment will be, what that looks like compared to what we currently generate for revenue in the water fund? And then, you know, depending on how we want to roll out, we probably could do a three-year rollout for these rates. Two would be probably more optimal, but three would require us to use some of our current fund balance. But it would make it a little bit easier in the sense that it wouldn't be so much all at once.
You know, the other question is, can you backload a bond too? We should talk about that. In other words, where maybe you pay a little less at the beginning and a little more as you progress? Is that an option? You know, there was questions about the bonding. But then the other thing that we can talk about is, if we get bonding money, and maybe Aaron, you can answer this, I don't know. Do we have to follow certain guidelines for, so for instance, labor costs, do they go up and things like that? Because I heard from Plymouth, the city manager in Plymouth, I talked to him recently. And he said that they got bonding money, but it actually, they declined it because it offset the cost. I mean, it offset the savings. So we need, so in other words, they were building something, I can't remember what it was. And because they got five million dollars in bonding money, they, for the project, which was fifty million, whatever it was. It offset the cost so much that they said, why even take the bonding money?
Yeah, that's definitely something to consider. Look, our request right now is for twenty-six million, three hundred dollars, as everybody's aware. Both the House and the Senate, I was talking with Andrew Myers and Anne Johnson Stewart on Friday, and they were waiting to get the bill jacket. So we have, once they get the House file number and the Senate file number, I'll share with everybody, so we can kind of follow the, the bill trajectory. But in, in that case, the amount of bonding money was a much smaller percentage of the total project cost. And then that drove probably, you know, ten percent cost increase for the project or more, it sounds like.
Right.
Because of the requirements that, that are attached with the bonding money.
Okay, so there's requirements with bonding money?
There are. So if we, if we would only get a million dollars, we'd have to do an analysis probably to see once if that million is enough to make us want to accept it or not, or if that'll drive the cost up two million.
What type of requirements would change?
So if you use. So if you use state funding, you're gonna be subject to state prevailing wage. So that's, if you're using union labor and state, it's already close, but it's gonna, and that will be very similar to a federal prevailing wage. So the state required prevailing wage, and I think that's it, they don't have any other, like, buy American, American Iron and Steel requirements. If you use federal funds, you're subject to the federal funding requirements, all the buy American federal, federal prevailing wage as well as the.
I just thought I'd throw that out because it's something to keep in mind.
So what was your first question? I was trying to answer, and then you went to the second question.
I think about backloading, wasn't it?
Oh yeah, about backloading a bond. You can do that, so we would work with, if we wanted to do that, you'd work with others, but then all these numbers that I've, that I've shown in the memo, the amount of interest that you pay will go up.
Right.
You know, so you're kind of kicking the can down the road a little bit, but you can limit, you know, you could, so basically, structure the bond however we tell them to. But I would, you know.
But there might be more people, see, I'm thinking down the road, there'll be more people on the system to help offset those increased costs. So I mean, it's something I think we could, at least I'd like to look at.
If we do, if we do look at, if we settle up on a project, it's gold. I think we can look at that once we get to the bonding piece, and we can have Todd give us some different options.
We just want to have some.
Cause I was looking for numbers, it seemed like this. And that's, we could set up financing in such a way that it could tail a subscriber, or it seems like that would be a good thing.
Something, I think we should at least look at, consider, okay.
Do we have a net kind of positive cash flow in the water, you know, bills versus?
Depends on the year. Basically, I mean, obviously, yeah, 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 this last year probably not, because we got our fixed, you know, annual principal and interest. And we've got our, obviously, operations costs, that's gonna be there to some level, you know, you can spend less, less time if there's less, you know, pumped water and stuff. But it's, yeah, this, this last year, we're not, we're probably not going to, or whatever, just for twenty-four, once the numbers.
We won't even be equal or level with our operational costs?
I doubt it, I mean, cause I mean, well, I mean, we had a decent year with connection fees and stuff. I mean, I think our utility, the actual charges are down several hundred thousand, you know, from, you know, last year when it was, you know, it's, instead of one point seven, it's one point three. I mean, we still like connection charges a few hundred thousand, but when you take our principal interest, it's close to a million now. And then you add up operational costs of another six, seven, eight hundred thousand, I bet we'll be a little negative this year, I guess.
Yeah, and you can kind of track that by if it's a wet year or if it's a dry year. So, you know, twenty-two, twenty-one, twenty-two, twenty-three, very dry years, so we were really net positive. Twenty-four was quite wet, and we're not positive likely.
So it's kind of a conundrum, because we don't want them to use too much water, because we, we don't have it. Plus, we're, we're limited on what we can pump. But we also want them to use more water so that we get more revenue, so it's sort of, yeah, kind of a.
Twenty-two.
Well, yeah, and to that point, when I talked to Jasper after last week's meeting, he had mentioned about Minnetoka Beach shows, which was the just assessed fee for the treatment plant. And I thought that might be a good option, if we switch, we add a flat rate on there for the treatment plant to the bill. So residents know exactly what they're paying for the new treatment plant. And there's a line item that will, in theory, go away at some point. And then, no matter what people are using, we're still getting enough to cover the bond payment, whatever that may be. Cause then we don't have to necessarily jack up rates quite as much as we would have to otherwise. The benefit is of what year, we still get income to cover the bond payment.
Like a debt service fee.
Yeah, so it's another line item on this, including like recycling, citywide service, their view, that's the water treatment plant. And then everyone would know what they're paying, that big, beautiful infrastructure is available.
Well, the other, I mean, I like that, and I know other communities have done that. Here's why, everybody, no matter how much water you use or don't use, needs the treatment plant, you know, needs the infrastructure. So if you had one base price that everybody pays, not based on how much you use, it would just be based on whatever number we figured we needed. I think it would be more fair.
And as more people come on, you would get more, they would immediately start paying for it.
I think, so I talked to the mayor of Minnetoka Beach today. The way they have it set up is they're gonna capture this three hundred and thirty-five dollars a quarter per account, which they only have, I think, two hundred and fifty-ish accounts. So they're gonna capture that, that'll go into their debt service fund for their twelve and a half million dollar water treatment plant. And if they so happen to get bonding money or outside money, that would go into the debt service fund. And then, you know, once that debt service fund has enough to pay the bond, over the life of the bond, they would stop doing that fee, so.
It's a water fund, so it wouldn't be really a debt service fund, it'd be a debt service reserve, because it's all in, it's enterprise fund, so it's just all within that same fund. Different than like when we set up debt service funds for road projects and stuff, so, but I get what the.
Yeah, so as, as people come onto the system and have to pay this hundred dollar a month, I think that's maybe something you're alluding to, too, is moving to. Yeah, it, whatever the billing cycle is, you'd have a set a fee amount. But once we'd have enough money in this reserve fund to pay the debt service for this plant, then we would eliminate that charge.
I like that idea too, because it's more transparent. I know my first water bill, we put it in twenty twenty-two, it was Johnny.
The only pushback. I mean, the only pushback we could get a little bit would be, it's a little bit regressive, because the people that use the least amount of water are gonna, it's gonna be a larger component to their bill. So it's like someone's a really good and actually conserves and only uses twenty-five thousand in a quarter, they're still paying whatever that fee we set. But if someone uses, and which the people that use the high amounts are actually, the irony is they're the ones causing the, the water treatment plant. If they're paying the same as everyone else, is it, to me, it's almost more fair. I guess I look at the flip side, to me, if you're gonna use a lot, you should pay more, and you just hit them with the appropriate rates you need to hit them with, but I guess.
And reduce that revenue, and then we don't have the money for the bonding. Or let's say, it's a super, I mean, this past year, it was really wet in May and June and July, and then they completely dried out, prevented all this, et cetera. But if it's super wet all summer long, our revenue was gonna plummet. And no matter what size of plant we do, we're gonna have to come up with that.
I mean.
Maybe a combination or something.
A condo, a single family, or, you know, if you spend it all on irrigation, you're still using the treatment plant.
Right, that's what I was saying.
Yes, so, I mean, you have to use a ton of water, you're benefiting, but you're still paying the higher rates. And we can, for that, a lot of the better worry, we can jack up the third tier scale, we can make that even more.
Let's say just don't, yeah, yeah, I'd recommend maybe not making the fee too onerous, that base fee that it's almost, you know, use, use a combination of that as well as like using third, fourth, fifth tiers, or adding more tiers, or whatever, I guess. Or, or, or just for adding, or then making the rate higher, or whatever, I guess.
Yeah, well, so, one thing we could do, I was, popped in my head, is you could have, you know, your water treatment fee be tiered as well. So if you are in the, you know, zero to twenty-five, or twenty-five to sixty-five, or sixty-five and above, your monthly service fee could be more.
No, because then it would have, it would, it would fluctuate too much based on what you use, that's, that's way too much.
Well, again.
And it's just gonna bring more questions in to staff. Yeah, why not pay this, why not pay this less?
Yeah.
You don't need to add more calls on staff.
I think if you figure out a fee, it should just be the same for everybody, because whether you use twenty thousand or eighty thousand, you still need that treatment plant. You know, and, and you would need the treatment plant whether you, no matter what.
Yeah.
So no matter how much you use or don't use.
Sort of Peter's question, this, this table, not this table, but the table in the memo, which, where did that go now? That up here, but, um, the table in the memo kind of shows about the annual, what was that? Is it? There. So there's roughly twenty-two hundred accounts on our system right now. You know, the easy math to just kind of look at is the thirty million dollar bond, which is higher than what we, what we, what the project is, but it's just out there as a round number. There's, the annual payment would be about two point two million, that would equate to a thousand dollars a year per account. You know, if you go down to the twenty-five, you know, we, we'd figure that out and, and, and come up with a number that would cover that bond payment, if that's what that was for. So, you know, I'm guessing it'd probably be around, you know, if you do the, if you do the twenty-five million dollar option one project, we'll say at that one point nine million dollars. We could do the math quick, but we figured out with the, with the fee schedule, it'd probably be like eighty dollars. I don't know, it's quick math, right? Probably got a better, quick math mind than me, but probably right around that eighty dollars a month.
Month or quarter?
Well, it depends, a month, a quarter would be.
Thousand a year, basically.
Yeah, so it'd be, you know.
You're not factoring in new growth either, and I think that should be factored in.
And I think we can do that as that new growth comes in, you can adjust that.
Adjust it down as new growth comes on.
A quarter would probably be two hundred and fifty bucks.
Two hundred and fifty bucks a quarter, or like eighty, eighty-two, eighty-two, eighty-two a month, or two fifty a quarter, is where we'd be at. And to put it in perspective, I guess I'll put, pull this up, and I, I can share this, it's really kind of hard to see on the screen, but this is basically a bunch of different communities in Minnesota, updated for twenty twenty-five, and what their rates are based on a certain amount of usage. So right now, I have this based on, sorry, ten thousand gallons a month, which is probably low, low in the summer, but average on the Qs one, two, and four. It's probably about average, so, you know, thirty thousand a quarter. I've normalized this, this graph for all of, for, for monthly billing. And you can see, probably can't see, but, so I'll read it. Minnetoka Beach, which is the community that we just talked about, their monthly charge for using ten thousand gallons a month would be two hundred and fifty-eight dollars a month.
So just for reference, my water portion of my bill for quarter three or four was two hundred and twenty-five dollars. So, for a quarter.
So, so right now, this, this yellow column here is Menetrista, so if you use ten thousand gallons, or thirty thousand, ten thousand gallons a month, your bill would be seventy-five bucks, or times that by three for the quarter, so it'd be two twenty-five. So we gotta know what Kathleen uses a month.
Four quarters out of this.
But, so if, if we would add a, if we would add a quarterly charge, I'll just do this in real time, let's just say we want to add a quarterly charge of two hundred and fifty dollars. It's gonna double.
That's gonna be high. I was thinking like a hundred.
That's for a quarter. So then if you go back to the output.
And that's current state, right?
This is, this is twenty twenty-five numbers, yep. So, you know, we're still right here, Maple Plain Mound, Orno, or sorry, that is incorrect, the, the yellow didn't follow Menetrista. We're over here now, so we're at number two, so we'd be at one fifty-eight a month. So if you times that by three, you'd be at about four sixty-five per quarter, on average.
I began, I will say this, I think whatever we decide, we have to switch to monthly billing, because the bills are gonna go up, and you can't have a twelve hundred dollar bill in the summer. How much water you're using, for calls, pedestrians, for staff, and everyone on the planet. Not to mention, you can plan that, or your monthly bill, if you use too much, you, you know, like, we're just gonna have to switch to monthly.
We're gonna have to add an employee.
Well, that's what I was gonna ask, because I, I thought the same thing, especially if you add the two hundred, whatever dollars it is for your.
Well, Jasper said it's pretty easy to outline it out to the bill.
Yeah, yeah, that's, but.
It's, we did this, this analysis.
Well, then you have to go around, and you have to read all the meters, and, and then you have this, I mean, there's, there's gonna be a cost to that. And so we have to find out what that cost is.
So we would need to add something, we would. So it's the meter read, which Gary's guys do, and then it's the processing from Brian's team. And then, you know, every bill you issue, you get an X amount of phone calls about your bill regardless, you know, if it's right, wrong, you know, something, you get a lot of calls. So there's also that piece, there's processing it every month, so it's a little different, because there's workflows already for our utility billing coordinator that, you know, she's set up to do it four times a year, not twelve times a year. So there will be, if we would go to monthly billing, there would be that need to add a position.
I think some of Renee's time would be completed, the printing and the mailing goes up. She's a very gross, every utility bill of that, here's something, I mean, probably takes, from start to finish, three days for her.
Yeah, I'd say probably two to three days, two and a half.
Yeah, I think what Ally's alluding to is if we would go to monthly, we would likely use a service to send that bill out, which requires us to send a file to them, and then they, they generate a piece of paper. It won't be like a postcard anymore, it'll be like an invoice, which will give us an opportunity, or could give us an opportunity to get more information out to the public monthly versus, you know, our quarterly newsletter.
Could we still read the meters quarterly, or can we bill monthly? So you read it, now, obviously, with delay, for a couple months, but if that's cumbersome.
You could, and one, one thing that we looked into is doing budget billing, if anybody's familiar with that, where you get kind of what your total bill is for the year, previous year, and then you divide it up by twelve. And then it's, you know, instead of paying hundred and fifty bucks for Q one and Q two, and then a thousand for Q three, it's, you know, you pay two hundred bucks a month, every month of the year or something. Yeah, it's an option, like, we, we, our financial or utility billing software is able to do it, we, we don't operate right now, but.
Economical option.
If you're, you know, have a fixed income or, you know, monthly budgeting, it, it would help out in that situation. It would be voluntary, you know, you have to voluntarily enroll in it, like you do with electric or sometimes gas.
Can we, is there a way to switch to online bills too?
We have, we have that option. Ryan with Markless and I, they're going.
Yes, some people opt in. Email or whatever.
I think it's only four times a year too, just one.
Right.
It's like, yeah, it's four times a year, whatever.
Right. Yeah, so people have the option.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Go and go check their app for their comp, and then, you know, that's how they do it. But I still think, even in the beginning, you know, we still think of the program as well, don't we?
I think depending on, some people choose to get both, with the email and the hard copy, so yeah, there's different.
How about we talk, okay, so here's the thing, I think, so this is good, and I think kind of gives staff some direction, some options. I think those should be brought back later, but I think tonight, what we have to do is really concentrate on, you know, kind of ties together, I, I get that. But let's, let's go through and figure out if, what option we want to do, and where we want to go from here. And then if we have time, let's go back to the billing and great discussion, and if need be, we can bring that back as well. We can bring that, that back, but I think it's more important, if you will, to decide, I think the, the real question here, maybe have, get these questions answered and/or then talk about the different options.
Yeah, so we, I'm gonna pull up the PowerPoint from the last meeting, and we can kind of go through that and kind of refresh on the, the options, but I don't know, Ally, if you can advance it to that option sheet. But basically, you have option one, which is the twenty-six million, three hundred thousand dollar option that has twenty-two hundred gallons per minute, plus a six hundred-ish thousand gallon clear well, which is what, treated water storage. Option two, you basically change the filter to steel gravity, and you get rid of the clear well storage. And then option three is you change the filter system to a pressure filter system and with no clear well. So to me, I kind of, looking at these, the clear well is and could be important for storage into the future, depending on growth, commercial, industrial, housing. You know, right now, we're projecting that we're gonna need additional storage by twenty thirty-ish. You know, that's only five years away, we'll have to start planning for that in three to four years, probably. Right now, the estimated cost for a million gallon water tank is six to eight million dollars. In five years, you know, take your best guess at what that's gonna be, you know, I, I, Aaron mentioned five percent a year, probably, in construction cost inflation, which is like, you know, throw a dart at a dartboard, it could go, you know, in the last seven years, it's almost double, so.
I have a question on the clear well, can I follow this, you said it last time? Is there like a chance of the clear well failing, and like what is the danger of it, how sound isn't too full in the water?
So if you concrete, you can concrete clear well, so it's below grade, concrete buried, and then you have pumps within the plant that pump water out. So it's, the water towers, it's gravity, right, it's up in the air, and that keeps the pressure system pressurized, this would be a little bit different, you have to pump it into the system. So only real failure point for that would be if the plant, for whatever reason, shuts down, or the pumps fail, and you can't get the water out. But we design, you know, secondary processes to prevent that, or at least minimize the risk. That clear well would have enough capacity so that, like, we could paint that under water tower at some point.
We would.
Yeah, so we would, yes, we would absolutely, in the near term, if, say, day one, the plant's operational, we'd be able to take King's Point Tower offline and rehab that, while keeping near the tower online, running the plant. So that wouldn't be a problem. And then in the future, if you want to take your larger tank offline, that would probably be closer to that twenty forty timeframe, where we'd probably be looking at that second tower at that point. So that would be delay the second tower out as long as possible, build that closer to twenty forty, and then either rehab your current, currently new tower at that point as well. What's the second tower view, but.
They didn't have the hammer. So the King's Point Water Tower is only four hundred thousand gallons, so has there, do they ever remove the tank and add a new tank? I do.
I asked him too, so he knows.
I mean, you know, so rather, you know, replace just the top with, you know.
Could we make the tight house bigger at the same site? Like, obviously, the support and everything that has come down, what, can you take it down and put a bigger one, that would be better there? And so, obviously.
Well, I'm thinking not even taking the whole thing down, is, is it possible to just replace the tank and make it bigger, I mean.
I mean, I haven't looked structurally at the tower, how structured it's here, but it's probably unlikely that you could leave the pedestal and take the tank off and make it bigger. Just, you, you need a larger base to.
It's designed for the weight of that.
So it's pretty unlikely to have a structural, you could absolutely demo a full tower, a blue tower.
But then why?
But then why? The challenge is that tower and the location that it is, is it actually chronologically, it's hard, it's hard for your system operating with that tank right there. So if you were to build a new tank now, I would tell you to build it somewhere else to get by all of that.
I think the, the clear well, that's the top, basically, is what it is. I mean, it's a, it's a, that's what it is, I mean, prolonging the need for elevated storage for another one down the road, because we will have that storage in place. I mean, that's the biggest thing for us, is to have that capability to, like Gary said, take both offline, you know, one at a time, down the road, to do service work, whatever. So that's the biggest thing for us, is, let's, you know, so if we can take King's Point off, make it more decent, and, you know, get it back online, and if they have us on the road, we can always step back up every time.
The, the most important part is we have pumps that are large enough, it's like, the plant for the high service point for the clear well, you can pump the water out fast enough. Our plant can't produce enough water to keep up with the pumps that are pushing it out, but you can sustain that for a short period of time, probably for a while. So that's made the clear well.
Well, that's same, same with power.
Yeah, it's, it's such a repeating, you're in power.
Right. So with this water treatment plant, what are we looking at in terms of how many more units, how many more pounds of your homes can we put on this existing system?
There's a fancy graph, I know, in our water. So, I mean, this plant will get us, we won't, we're not saying we're gonna build another plant.
I don't want to know years, because years doesn't really tell us anything. It's how many units are, how can, can we add, because that's gonna be the deciding factor as to when we have to do more. And is it, can we add another thousand homes? Can we add another five hundred homes? I mean, how many, how many homes can we add? That's, that would be the question, because. That's, that would be the question because.
If I remember right, from the, from the comprehensive water plan, I don't think we have another treatment plant in the south zone until twenty fifty-ish.
Yeah.
Isn't that, that pushes it out like twenty-five years, right? If my math is right, assuming a hundred homes a year, you know, so that's twenty-five hundred home, units, homes, not counting commercial or industrial. So it gets us pretty far along. You can get exact numbers. This is just memory.
So I'm just wondering, are we overbuilding too much? You know, I mean, you know, because and we're, and then, and then we're overbuilding by that much. Is it, then we have to depend on the homes coming? You know, if they build it, will they come? That's kind of the question. So that's kind of a conundrum, I think, that we're in. If we overbuild it for twenty-five years out, that sounds good, but then what if the homes don't come? Now all of a sudden, then after twenty-five years, now we have to either rehab or rebuild the existing infrastructure that we have.
Yeah, it, I mean, it all, it's all based on projections, right? So um, if we think our projections are overly aggressive, then potentially we could be overbuilding. If, if um, they aren't aggressive enough, we could be overbuilding.
Right.
And then be in the same situation in ten years, right, where we'll have another uh facility. The, I mean, you can look at a phased approach where you build a water plant with ability to add additional filters when you experience that demand, but there's costs to that. I mean, to have to go back into a site and add to an existing plant, um, is not, you know, sufficient way to do it. So even, and you'll pay more per square foot building space at that point. I think, well, if we're gonna really answer that, it's to look at the projections and say, do we think we're gonna add this many homes in this time period? Or are we gonna restrict the number of homes so that we don't, so we can, you know, save some money to even go? So I, I don't have a specific answer because I don't have the numbers in front of me, but we'd have to look at the projections.
A hundred seems a little aggressive if you look at like a twenty-year period or something. We haven't had really a recession for a while, but.
For twenty-one right now, people, twenty-one gallon plant easily double that.
I would think you would almost triple.
Double your, your system.
Yeah.
Yeah, but this is his system is almost triple what we currently have.
Yeah, your current, your current.
Current is.
King's Point five.
A thousand, right? It's a now.
Five hundred gallons, so if you lose a well, it's like you don't fill up that. So.
Yeah, you don't, yeah, keep away max.
Yeah, so.
We're putting on eleven hundred actually on King's Point right now, aren't we? Eleven hundred gallons, right?
It's a thousand eleven hundred.
Right, and then um, and we're gonna keep those two, those, those two wells we're keeping, five and six or six and six. Six and seven, and so then the other two wells that we're digging, they're gonna be added to the system. So you're always gonna have at least two wells, if not three. It, it, probably you're never gonna have two wells go down at the same time.
Yeah, you, usually we'll, we'll design so you lose one well, so you're maxing. It's kind of standard.
Right now, we are running both wells, six times seven combined.
Yeah, so, so to meet your peak data, you have to run both six and seven and at times three to meet the end of the system. If you lose any of those wells, you would, for an extended period of time, you'd be able to max it.
Right, but what I'm saying too is if we have eleven hundred gallons right now, currently, and it's servicing, we're not quite enough, service twenty, well, actually not, we can't do that because we have the north system too. So how many units are we servicing in the south system? About eighteen hundred? Seventeen hundred?
I would say probably two thirds are in the south, so you have.
Around seventeen, eighteen hundred, and now we're gonna add twenty-one hundred gallons per minute more. So I'm just saying, that seems to be like, that should last us for fifty years. I mean, it seems like an awful lot. You know what I'm saying?
Yeah, I don't.
So one thing I can remember is the Mount Simon will just be a secondary. So we're actually like, the new plant will have a secondary wall, we will be writing, writing on the Jordan. And we can only have, Aaron, what do you remember it is on the Mount Simon for a year of six hundred gallons? Yeah, there, there's, there'll be a number that we can all, so.
And the Mount Simon?
All Simon, they're always.
They're on.
But the Jordan will be the primary, yeah, we don't open here. So we should be able to keep up with the demand of one, with that one being for me.
Yeah. This one kind of shows. Treatment.
Breakdown of it back when we approved man, things that your system could hold. And then we approve everything.
On the left there.
This one.
That just. System that probably that max capacity.
Future water.
I get that, but I, I agree, you don't want it running at max capacity. At the other hand, I don't wanna overbuild so much that.
You don't want a lot of unused capacity.
Yeah, right.
Yeah.
And that's what happened with the King's Point Water Tower, actually. They built it like, I don't know how many years ago and it was never used. In fact, I don't know if this was before you were there here or not, but they actually had to put airways in there because it was, it wasn't the capacity, I mean, it was, it was overbuilt. Well, it was so overbuilt and now all of a sudden, we now have to spend all this money to refurbish it. Had we built it later, you know what I'm saying, we wouldn't be refurbishing it now.
So also for me, to that point, we could have, if we would have built a newer treatment plant next to it, we wouldn't be having this discussion now either. I think the goal of this is to not have this discussion again in five years, the new tower, or in seven years, I need another plant because we didn't build this one enough. Like, I wanna know, as a resident, on the water, on the water system, that what is being built now is going to get us through the next twenty years? Because I don't wanna be still paying for this and talking, we need another one.
Right.
So your current, uh, your historic max in twenty twenty-three was two point three, which is sixteen hundred gallons. So that's more than what your current King's Point plant can produce by six hundred gallons.
Six hundred, right.
And, and you're, again, the firm capacity of King's Point is only five hundred gallons. But if you lose a well, you can't like for five hundred gallons. So Dartmouth was adding, well, at almost eight and nine, you'll get six hundred gallons per minute from the, uh, so, um, the, or so you get fifteen hundred gallons per minute from the Jordan and six hundred gallons per minute from the Mount Simon. So you get twenty-one hundred gallons per minute of water treatment plant. So if I take the thousand that you currently have plus twenty-one, so I get thirty-one hundred gallons per minute treatment capacity if we would continue forward and you're currently using sixteen hundred, so.
That's double.
Mine's also should be like, whatever we build should be able to take the King's Point plant offline and still maintain the water we use. I won't say need, the water we use and are pumping, so they can rehab, fix, do whatever stuff they need to do on the current plant. You want, I want that redundancy.
So.
And that's, that's why we have that.
You'll have significant redundancy.
For a while.
For a while until you, yeah, until you grow and do it. And that's the other thing to think about is as you grow, you will eat into the excess capacity that we do have. And again, some of that is just redundancy. So if, if I'm really looking at, when I add these together, that's thirty-two hundred gallons of that. If I take your largest well offline, which is the way we would have to look at this, that'd be a fifteen hundred gallon. So.
Is that the um seven or six?
It'd be nine.
Nine?
It doesn't really matter because we can pump, we can run any plant, right? So if we lose a fifteen hundred gallon per minute well, if you think that would come out with a hole, that's seventeen hundred gallons of burn capacity is what we have to put into the system if you add a well without a filter summer, uh, which is about what you're pumping right now, so.
Take a hundred, hundred gallons per minute more than what we're pumping right now.
It's hard to, it's hard to look at it from a doubling standpoint because um wells in, in this network are very commonly doing a thousand, fifteen hundred gallons per minute. So you're just gonna get that capacity if you drill a well. You, you wouldn't want to drill a well and build one smaller because you just, there's not much extra cost to make it a little bit bigger and get the production capacity out of it. Um, so.
So you're saying, um, so the Mount, no, the Jordan is pumping fifteen hundred gallons?
Yep.
And then the Mount Simon, we can only pump six hundred gallons?
Correct.
Yeah.
So I, I don't feel like we're, we're building that much. It's just that, you know, you already are starting, starting with a smaller quantity of water, so to add another well or you're doubling, it's just gonna be.
Yeah.
Well, how many homes are left to build in one of the co?
Two, two fifty-ish.
Okay, so presumably those will build out, we'll add two hundred fifty more. And then is there any interest on any of the other land?
The, the trailer park is the only one that's had any recent discussions. So one, one piece I'll, I'll add, and this is kind of tied to some of the stuff that was discussed when I was hired was the commercial district too. I think we might see some movement in the next ten years there. I, you know, I don't have a crystal ball, but commercial usage might have an impact. We don't have any real heavy commercial users. Uh, if there's a desire to, to have, you know, during a twenty fifty comp plan adoption, to look at an additional room for industrial, you know, we would have that capacity. It all depends on what city council wants to, to do and what the community wants to do with their zoning and comprehensive plan. But having, you know, I think the way, the way Aaron described it is, yeah. I mean, we have enough, we, we're basically building for residential right now. And if, if commercial kicks in and there's a heavy I user, you know, that's a factor that we don't have in, in our plan right now that, you know, might cause us to adjust our plan in the future. So depending on what happens on Highway seven, there's a lot of commercially zoned areas there, um, that could have an impact too. And that, having a plant, you know, twenty-two hundred gallon per minute plant positions us better for that potential commercial development, industrial development, because we're gonna need that to do those things.
You wouldn't so much for commercial, you would for industrial. Certain industrial um businesses would need, would be high, high water users, but a lot of commercial, probably not so much.
It depends. If you're thinking of like strip mall commercial, correct? But if you're thinking of like a fitness center or some other large scale commercial.
Yeah.
You know, then you're, then you might scale it up a little bit, but you're right. I mean, industrial is a lot more than potentially than commercial, but there are commercial uses that do use water.
Okay, so the question then is, right? Do we want to continue on this, this trajectory that we've been on? Or do we want to pivot into the other option?
Yeah, so a couple of things to note, right? We've, we've been planning to do option one for a while. I think option two and option three are a product of the, the prices going up significantly. I think it's important to bid this out. We always have that option if the bids come in, you know, let's say to come in at thirty million or something, right? Like, we don't think that's gonna happen, but we have the right to reject those bids and then go back and look at, you know, what can we do to save some money or, you know, something, right? Because that, that's, that's more than what we have here. One thing that Brian brought up earlier to me today was, you know, is it possible to engineer option one and option two, build them as an add alternate, or option three, sorry? So those kind of two ends of the spectrum. Talked to Aaron a little bit before the meeting and, you know, it's probably something that we could do maybe behind the scenes a little bit more. Uh, and, you know, because they're an engineering group, not a, not a contractor, you know, it might be that option of looking and, and maybe um, getting a contractor, paying a contractor to actually look at the bid quantities for both and get us a number and say, oh, this is what we think it might be. Um, you know, option three is fifteen million, option one is twenty million, you know, something like that where we get, you know, because the engineering group, they're not the ones doing the bidding, you know, the contractors or the general contractors are doing that. So that's something that we can look at, maybe not bid it, but get a little bit more information. Um, what that would entail is directing this group to say, well, what's that gonna cost? Um, and then, you know, proceed with both. You know, I don't know if that's, I don't know if that's a ten thousand dollar exercise or a, I don't know what it is. If it's a, I don't know. So that's something that they would have to develop a task order for if we wanted to go down that path. You know, because right now we're looking at, our bidding timeline is what, May-ish potentially? Which aligns well, I know Brian asked some questions about the bonding request. The legislative session closes April or May nineteenth, I believe. If, you know, let's say, because the House isn't really meeting right now, they, they'll do a, they'll do a special session. We have time, sixty days.
But we also would know before May whether or not there is even gonna be a bonding bill.
Potentially unless there's a special session called and then they do the bonding bill in the special session. I guess my point is if we bid at mid-May, we have sixty days from them to evaluate the bids and award the bid. So if we don't get bonding money and that's what it hinges on, then we can say, well, this is what this hinges on. And we can award accordingly based on, once you get that input. If it's, you know, you know, we'll, we'll know a lot more in the next three months as far as the bonding request goes. But if you were, if you wanna look, evaluate option one versus option two a little bit closer or a little bit um more detailed, I would say then we would go to A to S and say, let's have somebody look at this that's in the industry, give us like an actual like kind of pseudo um bid as far as how they would bid it. And then we can look at the two and have probably a little bit better numbers, you know, as far as what we get for, for one or the other. With, I think everybody understands, you know, the trade-off between one and three is that clear well. And then, you know, if we would go with option three, you know, we would be setting the table that if, if needed, we'd be talking about a, a water tower in, you know, three to four, five, you know, some, some timeframe that's more near than if we do option one.
What would we pay for the water tower, the new one?
Well, I was two and a half, yeah, two point four, two point five, yeah.
I, I can safely say I do not wanna be discussing another water tower within the same term. We have to talk about it again within these four years, like we're just doing the clear well. Like I, I don't wanna do that again. I wanna, it sounds bad, but I wanna build it, right? I wanna build it once, then I don't wanna think about water other than maintenance for ten to fifteen years.
I, I know I, I mentioned the thirty-year bond. Is there an option that's, obviously we'd be more interested, but is there an option to do that and build more storage into the treatment facilities? We don't have to build a tower in five years?
So caveat to the storage is you do have to get the water out. So with the pipe and structure, you have um, bigger you make storage and the bigger you grow and use that storage, you have to push the water out faster, right? Because you're trying to accommodate.
Water issue.
So you need certainly larger pipes in and everything else. So it becomes kind of diminishing returns at that point. So I think we've, we've, we've put seven hundred fifty thousand gallons on the site. I mean, I reckon my, my team is bringing that down a little bit because six hundred is about optimal. Uh, or at least early estimates are, that's about optimal to get, uh, get what we need out of the storage you're gonna invest in. Uh, but if you, if you go bigger than that, the problem is you gotta push it out into the system and then insert a little pipeline with that. So you might as well build a tower.
But with the clear well, that should get us presumably to twenty forty without needing more storage.
With all the assumptions that we have in our.
That's only for the southern system. We have the northern system, so basically what we're saying is we're only going to have development in the southern system. Basically, if you don't wanna add more to your northern.
Well, there's capacity in the northern system now, isn't there?
It's pumping out seven hundred fifty?
We're pushing, probably abouts easily six to six twenty-five, but that's never been an issue there at all.
Right.
We have no, we have no problem. There's plenty of them for what we have there and that plant has room to expand there, so.
Yeah, I think the only thing we looked at there was maybe some redundancy issue.
Yeah.
Right.
Uh, have struggles, but.
But those aren't, you know, brand new water plants.
But still, the majority of the development will have to be in the southern system because the northern capacity is, there might be a little bit there, but it's not gonna have, you know, four or five hundred new home capacity. It's, you know, maybe a couple hundred, maybe.
Well, that's not in the growth plan though, is it? Like there's not.
And the twenty, well, David, the twenty forty plan shifted all that to the south zone.
Shifting, yeah.
That's, that's fine.
Well, but no, but what you need to understand, but here's, what you need to understand is there are people in the northern system with properties that would love to develop. And now you're saying, well, because of, we're giving it all to the south, we're not gonna let you develop. I mean, you, those are things to consider. I mean, it's, it's like, I mean, I understand why we would have to do that, but, you know, you gotta then be prepared to tell those people in the northern area that, yep, you can't develop until twenty forty or twenty fifty.
Well, can we do those people in the system? I mean, the Jen Olson property, we told them four years ago.
They're on the central system. Or in the southern system.
Right, but we told them four years ago, they can't develop until we get a new treatment plant and more storage. So, I mean, we've told. residents this before.
This is what I'm saying, we're, we're not talking about four years, we're talking about twenty or thirty years.
And, yeah, and I mean.
That's the difference.
I think either way, whatever we do in the south zone, we have to think about the north zone separately. So if there is some potential development in the future, we'd have to.
Right.
We, we know that we're gonna need water treatment at some point in the north zone. Uh, one thing I will note, and I think everybody's aware of this, the, the school has went on, um, for their irrigation needs a well that we gave them. So that's probably impacted the peak summer demand because they're no longer using our system to irrigate. And they're our, they're like our largest user of water. Um, so that's helpful, maybe bought us a little bit of time um, on the north zone, but if we do have a five hundred home development come into the north zone, we will have to address water treatment. The good thing about the north zone, as Gary alluded, is that there's some space to expand that plant on site as opposed to building a new plant.
Well, didn't they design the, um, building itself?
What's that?
Isn't the building itself in the north treatment plan designed so you can add another?
I remember, so, yes, yes, that's what it was originally designed.
So I think, I think if, if we do see some growth in the north zone, we, it's a little bit easier conversation than the south zone. It's, and that's a big if. I don't think there's much movement discussion at this point.
No.
On the north zone.
Okay.
Now, the plant was deciding to expand or fire.
Is that going to the wetlands? Just for the surrounding wet?
The, the current Kings Point plant is, you can't expand there.
Yeah, once it's designed to expand.
Sign's not, or what's around it? Like, one side's all three rivers park plant?
Oh, okay.
Not good one.
Well, it's surrounded by, um, conservation, um, not three rivers, but yeah.
Like, you know, town dog.
No, it's, it's, um.
Yeah, you're right.
It, it's in a conservation easement. It's like forty acres that was put in conservation easement, like back in the eighties or nineties or whatever, any. All right, wha- what is your, so we would want to know, or do you have any estimates what it would cost to give us these numbers? That the jester is talking about going, having a contractor, yeah. Having a contractor give us some estimates. So we know is it gonna be, I think that's what we were asking last time. Is there gonna be a five thousand, five million dollar savings or is it gonna be a two million dollar savings? Option number, whatever, two or three.
So, so I did make a call to, uh, Rexley Construction, who does a lot of water construction industry. And I was, I specifically asked them on their current estimate if they felt like it was correct. And, um, and Wade, the president, looked in, there were some of the recent build, bid numbers, and they just bid, uh, say Blue Earth bid a, uh, gravity, concrete gravity filter plant with seven hundred and fifty thousand gallons clear well. Um, I think it was thirteen hundred gallons per minute, and it came in at nineteen. That was the average of the three bids. Um, and so, and that only had two filters. So, if I just add those two additional filters that we're planning, twenty-three, twenty-four, nine seems pretty close. Uh, so I, I feel like our, our current estimate for the project we're talking about is correct, or at least, you know, in the ballpark of what a contractor would give us. Um, we didn't get into details on options two and three. Um, I would really need to sit down with the contractor and kind of walk through the modifications at the time for them to really understand, um, the type of cost impact. We definitely do that if we wanna, you know, probably if I'm gonna ask the contractor to get into that level of estimating, we probably want to pay them a little bit. Or have them, you know, on the team in some, some form. Because we want to make sure that they're putting up energy into it to be close.
Awesome. So, another thing with the filters, couldn't you do the same design that you're cur- currently doing, rather than concrete filters, couldn't you do steel filters, and wouldn't that be less expensive?
Yep, so that's option two. So option two is, so your Kings Point plant is a steel gravity.
Right.
Design, and that was the three to five million dollars savings. You know, I, I did look into, can I get more accurate for this? It's hard in this space, uh, just because we're still only at, you know, thirty to sixty percent design.
So why wouldn't we go there then? Because, I mean, I, you know, it doesn't sound like a lot when you're dropping twenty-six million total, and you know what, we can save five million? I think that's like a lot, yeah.
The change, so which one would it change?
It would only change, it would only change the filters. So currently, option one has concrete, is, correct me if I'm wrong.
It would currently change the filter and we get rid of, and clear well.
Oh, yes.
Hold on, just one, three, clear well, and, and keep the twenty thirty timeline for the story.
Okay, so what about if you did option two with the, uh, steel filters, or option one with steel filters and still kept the steel valve?
That's right.
And, and, yeah, I think what Lisa's asking is, can we do option two with a clear well?
Two and a half, yeah. It's, it's, if we were with the clear well, in that scenario, I'm estimating two and a half million dollars in savings. So instead of three to five million, it becomes, uh, you know, adding a half million to two and a half million.
Okay, if doing the steel versus concrete, so. I'm sorry, but if we can save some money, and it's still gonna give us the clear well, why not?
I, I don't know if you can go into details why, why we selected concrete versus steel.
The length.
I think, I think our original thought was that the, uh, the concrete filters were more past effective.
In a, in longevity.
Yeah, I did try to think through.
Will the steel filters need a repair? Not repair, but extensive work in the twenty years of the bond versus the concrete?
Yeah, you'll, you'll have to re-coat, refurbish the steel filter every twenty to twenty-nine years, hopefully. Uh, so there's gonna be some costs there. The, I'm trying to think through the steel filter, that my number with the clear well assumes that we're also removing high service pumping, so I have to go back and look at that, because if you're just gonna switch from concrete to steel, you would still have all the high service pumps for the clear well. So I need to go back to that to make sure that it isn't. If we don't also remove the clear well, that there's a savings. And we could do that, we can run the quantities for concrete, gravity.
Right.
Filters versus steel, if we're gonna keep the clear well to make sure our numbers are, are right. Uh, but it's more passive high service pumps than any will count.
So I'm, I'm, I'm hearing that, correct me if I'm wrong, that we wanted to use the clear well.
It does help.
Does the clear well require that the service pump, high service pumps be put in right now? Or is that a possibility for to leave feedback capacity?
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, you have to have the pumps to pump the water out, so we could, we could look at less pumps, but then you're just losing redundancy, which given the importance of this, probably wouldn't want to do that. The pumps really aren't that expensive, pardon. A, a pump is probably two hundred thousand.
Two, I was gonna say two fifty.
And plus another long-term, also you're talking maybe a half million dollars for a pump.
I don't know.
The expense of a, a clear well, all the concrete.
You know, stage, well, like, I think, uh, I think you have to build it minor.
Uh, we could definitely look at concrete and steel with the clear well and see if there's any savings there. And, you know, and can also look at some of the long-term oil now. If there is, you know, with regoing costs and things like that.
Yes, then if we're lucky, say, twenty-five years from now, then it's like, I'd rather do that versus.
Yeah, I mean, we don't have to do anything to steal, the steel filters for twenty-five years, that's fine. I mean, if we have to do something to it at five, and it costs, you know, thousands, thousands of dollars, like.
Yeah, I mean. Minnetoka has eight water plants we've refurbished, and they have steel gravity filters after the refurbishment, they had one at that point, it's twenty-five year old. So.
And Gary, correct me if I'm wrong, the, the, uh, King Point is steel?
Yep.
Yeah.
I think both of them.
Yeah, because they're basically the same.
So I think what you're saying is with, going from concrete to steel, keeping the, the clear well, you're maybe gonna see half a million, uh, you know, in savings, right? Which is savings.
Savings.
Gary, what's your take on, sorry, Mayor?
I do, dear, I mean, the clear well is one where that, I mean, that is a big factor for us, just to have that, to kind of see the system and be able to make that taller, but just see the tower repainted.
Well, and.
I'm tired of looking at rusty topper.
You are.
Brian, I see the red end.
Thanks for driving me on this.
They can throw a shout over it or something. I, I still, I mean, I have to say, I find that tower was so bad, and it's not really that. There's one right in my own.
It's something ninety.
No, it's like ninety-three or something. Was it ninety-six? Okay.
By Bruce Miller Perk on one ten and forty-four. That's older, and I swear, it's in perfect condition.
Well, how was it bad waters for a few times?
They maybe have.
The towers should be read by those good bits.
Yeah. It, it maybe was, I don't know, it could have been repainted.
My husband says it's going up there with the sprayers.
Well, that'll look good for probably like a month, then.
Why is, why is that, I'm just trying to tell him, why is it?
Condensation.
Condensation, there's like certain signs that you can do that, you have to drain it all, and I could be the whole process, plus the internal components on it, that should be prepared.
Yeah, we're just like, there's not really, only one inch of them, that's like this obnoxious blue color. I'd rather that's the painted.
What is the cost to repaint?
Eight hundred thousand.
Once, so we haven't even.
The cost to refurbish it? It, it's not just painting, although it needs some refurbishing.
Yeah, there's also internal work that needs to get it done.
No point, you don't need that until we have a new project.
But.
Because you have to pull it online.
Gary, I think a few years ago, we had said it was about five hundred thousand, and I think if they, other people have missed sixteen, nineteen, sixteen.
One of the big factors that we really do need in that tower is a two belt, and because right now, when the plant is running, um, Kings Point filters before the outer tower, so it would be nice to have it hooked to the SCADA system that keeps, so the whole towers can right now we fill one up, we don't have a lot of, we could shut one up with the system, build a uh, southwest tower, you know, and, and keep the system in check. You mean, it's, it's very hard at this point to do that, and A, just the word that we need this in there and stuff, so that's one of the big factors. The other thing is too is the, um, the mud dump is never solved, so when the tower does get some slime and such, we have no way of drinking it, never solved. So, there's a lot of factors that need to go, I mean, there's my system's bad, and I mean, you name it, I mean, there's a lot of stuff that needs to be fixed.
All right, and just for all the issues we have with the Kings Point plant, now the tower, the new plant, now that will not have any of those issues, right? The filters not running, capacity, and, you know, problems, and that will not be put ahead.
Everything's burned around.
Okay, um, questions, and then let's give.
No, I could say, you know, whatever we end up doing, though, we, we just have to make sure that Woodland Cove's two hundred and fifty homes don't go in and development stops, or we're all gonna be in trouble. We, we, we need to add, somehow have a plan. If we're gonna go ma- make this big a infrastructure investment, somehow we gotta make sure people keep coming.
I know, that's.
Or work, I mean, that's, that's why I, I was, you know, your point earlier about overbuilding and stuff, if all of a sudden, that's my biggest fear. I don't know if anyone else has, that maybe everyone else is like, we're gonna keep building a hundred new homes, but if we were like in Woodland Cove's life cycle at the beginning, when I knew a thousand homes were coming, I'd feel better, but if, if nothing comes and then after these last couple hundred homes go in, we're all gonna be in trouble, because we're gonna have twenty-five million in investments and no one to pay for it, so it's gonna be people screaming at the top of their lungs. So I, I like the eighteen million dollar option somehow to get it down, but everyone wants the twenty-five million, somehow we better make sure people come. You know, like, build the dreams, we build it, people better come, so, I mean, we're gonna be in a lot of trouble.
There was a concern that the water rates, too, I think, maybe they're making this a less.
Oh, desirable city to be if, obviously, our water rates, and if, yeah, I mean, it's, yes, you want the water infrastructure, but you don't want to be the that, you don't want to be the champion of the highest rates, or where it's, uh, I mean, we don't have Minnetoka Beach where, you know, the, the surcharge, we talked about the three hundred dollars a quarter, a hundred a month. That's two million dollar homes. A lot of the people on our water system are in Hunter's Crest in four hundred thousand dollar home or whatever. It's a lot more onerous on them to add a thousand, twelve hundred bucks a year than it is for someone in a, in a two million dollar house in Minnetoka Beach. So we just gotta look at the financial piece and make sure everything's meshing, this is.
There are really accessible numbers that you can look at as far as what road is expected, just in our country, not just Minnetrista, and um, but you do have to look at just Minnetrista. Okay, well, hey, Minnetrista, but don't look at the, I mean, apartment building that we just built is beautiful, and it's thirty percent full. How long does that, is it, does it take to fill a apartment?
It's our first one, so I don't.
Seventy percent?
Yeah, yeah.
Very expensive.
Yeah.
So, I think you have a good point. I don't know that we're gonna be growing that fast.
It could drop. I mean, my first few years here, where we, I mean, it was like oh-seven, oh-eight, oh-nine, we added thirty homes a year. If we're only adding thirty homes a year, we're gonna be in trouble. I mean, basically, so financially at least, we might be great and have water coming out of their ears for the next twenty-five, fifty years, but we're gonna be in trouble financially, I'll tell you that, so. It's, it's a kind of a chicken and an egg conversation, because if we don't build water treatment, then we can't build houses either. Right? So it's, it's this conundrum, I mean.
What if, well, what if we continue down this path? Change from gravity to steel, uh, concrete to steel? But then, can we have a bid out without the clear well? Then we would know how much that's gonna cost us, knowing that we could add it in the future, even if it's five or six or seven years from now, then we would know if there's more homes coming.
Could we add the clear well later? Or does it have to go now?
It's underneath, I believe.
I don't know. I would think if we would if, if, if we, if we would do the clear well, we would build a new tower up here. Yeah. We'd build a new tower somewhere else, so the balance would be better in the system.
So it, could it be designed and or bid like that? What, what would a, eliminating the clear well, what does that save us today?
Um, you could, if you wanted to do a clear well, I'll bid alternate. So, you know, based on, as we're talking, and numbers for the clear well, we have to describe what that is. You would have to, your filters, your steel filters would have to have basically a small clear well built into them, so you can pump out those similar, which you have at Kings Point, uh, so there'd be some process piping. We had, would there be some excess design, because we have to design a different set of pumps to get the water out, built, steel filters versus the concrete. But you could do a bid alternate with that. It would be complicated, but we could consider it. So, the other thought I had was if you go and steal filters, you could, because they are more of a, a unit, I guess, you could, right now, the, the design had four filters kind of in a box, you could do one set, space for the next set in the future. Again, you're gonna pay more in the future for that, if there's logistics.
More people too, potentially.
Yeah, but the logistics of having to open up a building again, get that skid again, but that would probably be a more reasonable approach of, don't get rid of the clear well, reduce your, like, put in one set of filters and then a future space for a future set that would be easily incorporated, um, that would be more common.
That's kind of what we have in the north plant, but we don't have a third wall there, but.
Right, but we, we would just have a system to have all the moving pieces apart, and whenever you experience that demand.
So what kind of savings are, like, like?
I'd have to go against.
I don't like that idea, because it doesn't, yeah, I'm concerned we're over, overbuild, and there's recession, or water rates reduce our growth. So being able to build a capital building that you need for extensives.
All right, I, 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 I agree with Brian.
So we can add an option.
Oh, okay.
To be. That's fine, we can look at that, and I could compromise any, to understand what the unit prices are for filters, maybe get a little more specific on what we, what we wouldn't have, what we clear well, the cost for that.
So, in summary, so I'm, I'm on the same page as everybody. We're gonna look at, we're, we're just, uh, steel filters instead of concrete. We're gonna look at two filters versus four.
With the expansion.
Well, yeah, yeah, let's be able to expand to four if we want, but just two right now. And then, um, looking at clear well versus no clear well. But, is Gary emailing me?
It's Gary emailing me. Close my emails, all right.
Well, let me ask one other quick question, so right now you have a six hundred thousand gallon clear well designed. Okay. Okay, is it, should it be downsized to four or five, I mean.
Yeah, sorry, our team ran the analysis, we looked at five hundred and seven fifty.
Okay.
Five hundred, uh, in a, in a max day scenario, your clear well would get down to about thirty percent full, going off memory, so no problem. Uh, which we don't like going below fifty percent. So five hundred is too small, seven fifty, maybe would only go down to about sixty percent, I think it was.
That's too big.
So that's a little too big, so I, I just did rough math, six hundred seams or, and I guess the fifty percent go overbuild. But get us to the fifty percent line and we'll call it, and I think six hundred is above that, I haven't run the actual numbers yet, but that's kind of where I'm.
Okay, well, let's, let's do those numbers.
So just to confirm with the group, we're going to look at, are we going to look at removing the clear well or are we going to keep the clear well?
I think we keep the clear.
In all the scenarios. To six hundred thousand, so we're really just the two different scenarios are steel with two versus more.
Because without the clear well, we can refurbish the Kings Point tower. And we have to refurbish it, otherwise we're looking at multiple millions to replace it. That's kind of how I'm looking at it.
So we're really just looking at the different filter configuration.
Filters, steel, and also number of filters.
I think, I think the big benefit of the clear well is it delays future storage, it's not so much the. Is if, if you build, if you build a cloud of the clear well, you'd have enough capacity in this new plant in the short term to be able to rehab it. Clear well, I think the clear well is really beneficial to future storage.
Well, then give us a number without the clear, give us both, you know, tell us, okay, without the clear well, here it is, with the clear well, here it is. And then how far out would we be, realistically speaking, with, with the clear well or without, you know, so we. I think we need.
We'll find its number, focusing on option two A with and without a clear well.
All right. All right, and then we'll have a rate discussion at a different, a different work session. Sorry, it's just so much money and, and now, you know, that's, I think, the reason why we really need to go through this.
You might, I think you might choose on some dates.
Yeah.
I would recommend, you're, you're going to talk about rate adjustments and bonding, there's. When our teams looked at it, there's not, there's not enough separation between the rates to encourage behavior. Typically, you want to see a thirty to fifty percent increase between, like, your, your tier ones, tier two, tier three. To incentivize people to decrease watering, so if you're looking at, you know, adding a base charge, adding the depth. Service charge, I think those are all really good ideas, but also looking at the spread between your rates might help incentivize the. People that are using a lot of water to decrease water, so we had people that do a lot of rate work and they really felt like there just wasn't enough separation, so something to consider.
Well, maybe your people need to talk to our people, they got a tough.
We still got a lot of calls a few years from when we increased the rates or.
Second tier, more practice years, six dollars more, so I mean, like, how much more?
I think, I think it's the middle tier. It was, it was your bean, your mill, it wasn't enough, and twenty five, zero to twenty five thousand is still a pretty good chunk of water. We're saying usually about a monthly average, hopefully use six thousand, you know, this is a national, regional average. So, um, having zero to twenty five thousand in the first quarter is, is a generous chunk to really be charging people that bottom tier, so. Looking at how you maybe adjust us there.
Okay, thank you, all right.
Can you be on a rate discussion?
All right, um, so next, uh, so that, that's everything that we have, so now we're going to, if I get a motion to adjourn, we can be adjourned for our. Work session, is there a moment to adjourn, thank you, Ms. Rockin, zero second. Thank you, Mr. Governor, all those in favor, please provide a aye, 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 I was opposed, motion passes, so at six forty five, we're supposed to do our E D A, um, meeting.
We can do that meeting.
Yeah, we can.
If we want to start it at. Six fifty five, we can.
Do you want to take a ten minute break and we. Do a ten minute break and.
Yeah.